Good evening and welcome to the January 13th, 2014 Kittle Hill's Board of Commissioners meeting. If you would please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if you will please join us for a moment of silence before we move into our agenda. Thank you. Okay. First on our agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. We'll move right into the first time we have set aside this evening for public comment. This is a time set aside that anyone can address the board about any topics that they wish to discuss with us. We do ask if you're speaking as an individual that you please limit your comments to three minutes, and if you're speaking on behalf of a group, if you would keep those comments to five minutes, please. We did have a sign up sheet before the meeting. Don't worry if you didn't sign up and you wish to speak, we'll start with the names on the sign up sheet and then we'll call anyone from the floor that wishes to speak. The first person that signed up this evening is Kenny Midgett. And when you approach the podium, if you'll identify yourself by name and address, please. Welcome Kenny.
Hi, my name's Kenny Midgett. I have a property on Sioux Street in Kittle Hill. This is probably the fourth time in eight or 10 years I've been at the meeting here and asked for the Kittle Hill to look at the drainage issue on the south side of Sioux Street, in particular, the west side. The west side of Sioux Street, Wyandotte Street on both sides, and the east side of Apache, none have drainage. The reason I ask is there's probably 50 properties in that area and a good heavy rain like we've had in years past and stuff, there's 12 or 15 that pretty well flood. And there is a couple in particular that get maybe two to three feet of water in their yard. I have an adjacent property to one that holds a lot of water, and in the past, we have pumped 500,000 gallons in one day off of that property into the drain on Creek Street that was added several years back. The reason I'm approaching the board again is the both sides of Sioux Street used to flood. They put a drain on Creek Street and the east side of Sioux Street no longer floods. The east side of Sioux Street, some of the properties are lower than in elevation than the lowest property on the west side of Sioux Street. The town engineers have come out and said that it can be, they can put drainage there and fix the problem. And the last time I was here, it was probably four years ago, they said that they would contact me and let me know how it was going, and I've never heard a word since then. So I'm asking again for the board or whoever to look at it again and see if something can't be done in that area, because according to the engineers, it can be done and it is all downhill. So it would help improve at least 12 or 15 properties out of the 50, but they all do flood to really one particular property. That's my, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Kenny.
Okay. Next is Mr. Jack McCombs, welcome.
Jack McCombs, 917 Cedar Drive, KDH. I attended the Thursday evening presentation by Willow Kelly about the insurance increases that we're likely to face in the near future. And I was really alarmed. I guess I didn't understand the gravity of the situation until Willow's presentation. And I feel pretty confident that you folks on the board are as alarmed as I am. And I've put together a few questions for you, and I'd just rather read these and ask you to consider them. What concerns me is how much more will I have to pay for both homeowners and flood insurance? It appears that it may be significantly more. Will I be able to sell our house if the insurance rises significantly? And what will the increased insurance cost do to the value of our home? Because the higher the insurance goes, the cost is, the lower the value of the home becomes. This is particularly a problem for seniors such as myself, and there are a lot of seniors in this town, because we look to the value of our home to pay for the increased costs that we may have in the last stages of our life if we have to go to some assisted living arrangement. And if we can't sell the home, or sell the home at the value we think it is, then that's really going to hurt us. Can I trust our insurance agent to give us, to give me reliable information? And it's, I don't mean to disparage the trustworthiness of insurance agents, but I don't think the insurance agents have complete and accurate data at this point. And I certainly do not believe that anything they tell me, their companies will back up if a push comes to shove. So one of the things I think the citizens of the town need is some service, somebody in the town or in the outer banks that could give us good, solid advice, because it's very difficult, I think, for an ordinary citizen to understand the implications of significant rises in the insurance cost and how that can affect your financial well-being. And I think we need some expert advice to help us through this maze. As the board knows, I was a strong supporter of beach nourishment, because I thought the increased taxes that would come about would be dwarfed by the taxes and actions that would occur if we lost our beaches. But with increases in the insurance coverage for both flood and homeowners, I'm now thinking that how many of our citizens could potentially lose their homes because they cannot afford the increased, the increased costs, the insurances, the increased taxes for beach nourishment, or how many of our citizens are going to do without necessities? I do a lot of volunteer work with the food pantry, and for your information, if you don't already know it, the demand for food now by citizens that don't have enough money, enough nourishment, has been very dramatically increased in the last several months. What is going to happen in the future if we had a lot of people that can't afford food? Are you folks interacting with the state and with the federal government to discuss these increased insurance costs? I know that Southern insurers has talked about it on their website, the county has talked about it, but I haven't seen anything on the KDH side. I do assume that you have been talking to at least the state officials. So perhaps you could talk about, not tonight, but let the citizens of the town know that you are aware of the problem and you're discussing the problem, and hopefully you're establishing a position by the town to oppose these significant increases. When I was doing some research today, I found one other thing that really disturbed me. This is a quote by, in the Island Free Press, and I'll just read this very quickly. There's another potential headache looming for North Carolina residents who live in flood zones, and it has nothing to do with the recent changes in the federal law that are spiking rates in flood insurance. Instead, recent changes made in state building codes could affect discounts awarded to participants in the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating Service, translating to higher flood insurance policy rates for homeowners. And this is on top of the increases that are coming. So I don't think that people really, many people don't understand, we're talking about, I'm paying for flooding shores right now, $634, I just paid that. I could be paying more than $1,000 a month. Now, my wife and I are fairly well comfortable, but if you start paying $1,000 or more dollars a month, then your reserves are going to run out pretty rapidly. So, thanks.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening in the audience that wishes to speak at this public comment time? Anyone? Okay. Seeing no hands, we'll close public comment and move to, response to public comment. First Kenny, thank you for being here. My call on Steve, I'm not sure if you're prepared to help us address what Kenny brought up about the flooding on the west side of Sioux Street. Kenny will respond how we can, but if we need to follow up, that's absolutely appropriate as well.
Yeah, it is a tough situation, and the flooding he described is accurate, it's two to three feet. The problem there is those lots and the pads under the structures are two to three feet below the grade of the street. It's higher at Third, it's higher at Indian, so it's kind of in a bowl. And so, being that they've built in these areas that are so much lower than the road, Pete isn't certain that we can completely dry up all the private property. And there isn't a good way to get from the drainage on the adjacent street into Sioux. So really, we're looking at when Third Street is redone, getting a trunk up Third that can get in there and provide some drainage.
When's Third Street coming up?
It's in the, it's on the list in the, in one of the pending years.
Do you know the condition of hand?
I think the condition near 158 was poor. It was kind of on the...
Is that the area we're talking about, near, what Kenny's talking about?
It's maybe a third to a halfway between Bay and, and the bypass. It's just a tough area that the people built so much lower than the street.
So that's not on, it's not coming up in either of the two, it's not coming up in our spring program to be done, or fall, it's beyond that, right?
Yes.
Is that in an area where it could be rolled into, is any of the ones we're going to do before then close enough to, they're not, are they, to roll it in with them?
Yeah, I mean, we can consider that at the next Street Improvement Special Project Subcommittee.
Okay. I'll be there.
I mean, I guess at this stage, that's really the appropriate thing, is to put this on the agenda for that meeting, can we request for that to be done?
And again, I want to say, it's difficult, because the flooded areas are so much lower than the right of way. And that's kind of a unique position, we don't, you know, a lot of areas, you know, it's generally flat, and if we dry up the right of way, we help the adjacent properties, but these are so much lower, it's going to be difficult.
It's going to be, though I guess something's better than...
Yes.
Than nothing, but it, I mean, so it may decrease, it may not eliminate the two to four feet, but maybe bring it down to...
Mm-hmm.
And I see Kenny has his hand up. If, what's best for the meeting, though, if you don't mind, is maybe, Steve, if you can find out what other concerns Kenny has, and make sure that you share them with Steve. And then can we let Kenny know when our next Street Improvement and Special Project Committee meeting is? Kenny, I don't know if that's going to work with your schedule, but it may be worth you attending if it's possible. Great. Does anyone else have anything?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Thanks, Kenny. Okay. And then in response to the various, the very serious concerns that Jack McCombs expressed about the insurance, for those of you who were not able to attend last Thursday night, Willow Kelly did a presentation on that very topic here. We did record that, and it will be aired on, on Channel, it's already airing?
It's also linked from our web, sorry.
Okay, it's linked on our homepage or on our webpage, but it's going to be also re-aired on Channel 20, so if you want to understand the full scope of what Jack is talking about, please tune in, tune into that or visit our website. They are very serious threats, I know there's, if you listen to the news, I mean, this morning they were talking about how that North Carolina is filing suit to challenge the, some of the federal laws that are going, or legislation that's going in related to these significant tax or insurance increase, increases. So I know, I appreciate what you're saying as far as, I mean, obviously, some of the questions that you posed, I mean, they're not questions that we would have the answer to, however, it does, I appreciate you bringing them to us, because I do think there's some communication that we can do, just to help our citizens, like putting this on the website and trying to stay abreast of it and putting information out there, so. While I don't know, I don't know who the expert, so to speak, is in our area on some of the questions you were asking, but I think it's worth looking around and seeing who could be that expert in making, making it known if we can find that person. I would like to call on Meredith, kind of as our building code changes expert, so to speak, because I think some of the information that may have, that you may have seen on Island Free Press, she can probably clarify some of that for us tonight, and then we will continue to follow up on the insurance issues.
And to add a little on the insurance issues, the planning department has several handouts available to better explain all the various aspects of the Bigger's Water Act of 2013. There's also a bill that is being introduced, I believe, this week into Congress and Senate to delay the Bigger's Water Act enactment for four years to allow FEMA to do a comprehensive financial analysis of what those effects will be. Town doesn't know what those effects will be, the insurance people don't know what those effects will be, but they're trying to do a full study to determine what those effects will be when it is implemented, so that the US government can understand it and decide whether implementation is the proper thing to do. It hasn't passed, but they're encouraging you to look at that bill, and I can get you the bill number if anybody's interested. As far as the building code, Island Free Press is part of Deer County. It is a little different, there are some, there have been some changes that may affect their CRS rating. CRS revamped their entire program. In the past two years it came into effect, we will be affected by it two years from now when we renew our CRS points. We are probably, as a town of Kittle Hill, not under the constraints. I think the windborne debris constraint is something that the county has to deal with, because they have a mainland and an island as a county, so Island Free Press would be picking up on that. Kittle Hill doesn't lose those points for the windborne debris, because of the exceptions in the building code for islands. Right Greg? So that part of the CRS change in the building code should not be detrimental to the town of Kittle Hill. The changes to the CRS program all the way around may change our point system, but we're hoping it will not.
Would you tell everybody what the CRS is?
Community rating system, it's a branch of the National Flood Insurance Program that deals specifically with insurance. And municipalities that participate in the community rating system do a various number of tasks and get graded, basically, getting points, and depending on the number of points, the lower your score, the better. And we were a six at the last one, which gives all of our citizens a 20% discount on their flood insurance. Each grade you go down, a five gives you 25%, and there's only one city in the country that's a one, and I believe it's like the tallest mountain in Montana. So it gets a one, and they do a lot of public education about flooding, but they, so we're a six, and that's a really good rating for our size town, and it gives our citizens a discount. We've previously been a seven for a good decade, and we're not sure how the new CRS, we've been working with the CRS coordinator to see how the new regulations will affect our score.
Thank you, Meredith.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay. Well, Jack, I think, just in closing, as far as comments to your comments, after this meeting, we can talk with staff on ways that we can try to, what information that we have to get out there, and that we can help promote and try to keep citizens informed, we'll look for ways to do that, to improve that communication, specific to insurance, possibly something on our homepage that's updates, like, you know, even tracking that legislation or something like that, so. Thank you. Okay. With that, we'll move into introductions and presentations. We have one presentation this evening, and Debbie, may I call on you for the introduction?
Yes ma'am. This evening, we're honored to have with us our auditor, Teresa Osborne of Doughty and Osborne Accounting Firm. She is going to present the audit findings to the board, and then our finance director, Beverly Kissinger, has a PowerPoint highlight on the CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which you each have a copy in front of you. Teresa?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I am here tonight to present the results of your June 30th, 2013 annual independent audit. The town has received an unqualified opinion on its financial statements, which is the best audit opinion you can receive, and this is found on pages one and two of your audit report. Additionally, there were no findings related to internal control over financial reporting or over compliance with laws, regulations, and grants, and this report is found on pages 137 and 138. The town prepares a comprehensive annual financial report, which is a step beyond the basic required financial statements and disclosures. It includes significant additional statistical data that more fully presents the town's financial history and performance. Beverly is going to follow up tonight with some more detailed numbers in the audit report, so I'm just going to give you a few major highlights. In the general fund, the town's unassigned fund balance at June 30th, 2013 was $5,695,411, which represents 46% of total general fund expenditures for the year, and is in compliance with the town's minimum fund balance policy. In the water fund, there was a positive increase in net assets. Operating and capital revenues covered operating expenses and depreciation, which is what we want to see. In the wastewater fund, there was a decrease in net assets. Although operating revenues have been increasing over the last couple of years, they're sufficient to cover operating expenses, but not quite sufficient to cover the depreciation on the infrastructure in the wastewater fund. The tax collection rate on ad valorem taxes was 99.42%, which is an excellent collection rate. Overall, the town ended the year in very good financial condition. I would like to thank the finance department and all of the staff for their work while I was here, and I look forward to working with you next year.
Thank you.
And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions for Teresa?
No.
No.
Good. Thanks Beverly.
Thank you.
Thank you Teresa. I'm going to follow up real quickly and let you know that each year, I normally present the mayor with a nice new plaque that we received, our certificate of achievement, or certificate of excellence in financial reporting. Well, I don't have a plaque to give you this year, because they gave us a stationary one. And because I think we've hit our 25th year, I don't know if that's really the reason, but rather than send us a new plaque every year, we'll add a new button to our granite plaque. I'd like to thank the finance department for being here, for getting that plaque up there. I want to thank Amy for taking lead on, basically compiling and doing the CAFER, as well as Sharon Alsbrook and Sherry, thank you very much for, for all your help, your support, and your excellence in financial reporting. I'll give you a few highlights for the year, June 30th, 2013. And Greg, I'm going to have to ask you to just switch the slide for me. Some of the highlights for the year, and this is government-wide, our assets exceeded our liabilities by $38.4 million. Of that governmental net position, that's a new term, net position, not net assets, but it's the same thing, governmental net positions, $21.8 million, and the enterprise net position, which is our water fund, wastewater fund, is $16.6 million. That is a positive increase from the prior year of $110,984. Continuing on with the highlights, as Teresa noted about our fund balances, our combined governmental, which includes general fund and some of the capital reserve funds and the governmental fund balances, was $9,348,519. This is actually a decrease from the prior year. And again, in, in your report, you will see why that is a decrease, it's, there are items that are, that we record because of governmental accounting, governmental counting principles that don't necessarily affect governmental budget accounting. A little confusing, I probably shouldn't have thrown that in there, but, but anyway, it is a decrease from the prior year. But our general fund, unassigned fund balance is $5,690,541, which is 60.9% of the total fund balance, it's 43.3% of the total expenditures, and what we normally target here is the next year's budget. But that general fund, unassigned fund balance is what we commonly refer to as the undesignated fund balance. And I will go back to say that if you, that decrease in the fund balance, if you looked at Exhibit Four, it explains where we get from, from positive net increase in net position. So it'll explain that. The general fund, unassigned fund balance, that gives you a 10-year graph on where our fund balance percentage is. Debt for the town at June 30th was, for governmental, for general fund, was $2,281,419. For the water fund, it's $47,822. Again, when you look at, if you look at your report, our debt is actually more, but there are some, like, post-employment benefits, compensated absences, that type of thing that do raise our debt. However, these are debt that we are actually making payments on. And this is our ratio of debt service to general fund expenditures, and it is right at about eight tenths of a percent. Probably the lowest it's been in 10 years. For the general fund, our primary revenues, as you see, are ad valorem taxes, and then the purple and the green are other taxes, and those are other taxes that are, again, dependent on our, our shared formula, but those make up the bulk of pretty much 80% of our revenues. Our primary expenditures, as you see, that big purple piece of the pie, is public safety, which is fire, police, and ocean rescue, and then general government, and transportation, environmental protection, and that little tiny public works, which is our fleet maintenance division. But that's where we spend our money. Total budgeted revenues this year was $11.8 million, and pretty much, our actual revenues were pretty much close to that, with a negative budget variance of $51,000, and most of that's timing-related differences. It's, it's positive, negative amongst various revenues, but that, timing-related differences. And our general fund expenditures, budget to actual, our total budgeted expenditures was $13,419,000. Our total actual expenditures was 12, pretty much 12.3 million, for a positive budget variance of $1,134,777. And that's what under, what we were on the budget. Okay. Acceded value of our taxable property, and this is in millions, and this is before the revaluation. the revaluation. So if you looked at our revaluation, you see that 2,000 number, that's probably about where we are for our revaluation. That's a 10-year history. And I'm showing you, this is the sales tax total, and this is the county trend over the past 10 years. We are approximately, I want to say that was about 20, 22 million, 22 million total. And then Kill Devil Hills, this is again, a trend. That is at one point, almost 1.8 million. And then this graph shows you where the red graph, the red line, shows you where the total sales tax for the county, and then the green line is Kill Devil Hills share. That is one of our shared revenues. Again, this is occupancy tax for Kill Devil Hills. We're right at $2 million. Again, this is a 10-year graph. It was a little lower this year due to our revenue sharing formula was lower. Again, this is the county total collections, and the red line, and this is the town's collections and the town's portion of that in the green. And then land transfer tax, which at one point was a significant part of our revenues, and we did a lot of street improvements at that point. And that kind of shows you where it slacked off a little, well, considerably, but it is kind of leveled out a little bit over the last five years. And this is our interest income, and this is portrayed as the, this is the interest income that was recorded. There is a notation about a fair market value adjustment, but this is the actual interest income for both the governmental and the enterprise fund. And again, that was a significant source of income at one time, due to the, both the size of our investments, but mostly due to the interest rates have dropped over years, And some of our major initiatives this year, we completed $1,135,541 in street drainage and waterline and wastewater improvements. And these projects were what we completed in this past fiscal year. The multi-use path, Wright Woods, Raymond Avenue, Coral Street, and then we spent some preliminary engineering for the fall of 1314, the year that we're in now. $73,941 waterline adjustments that were associated with those street and drainage projects. We borrowed $161,932 for, we purchased some, a computer equipment that we badly needed across town, a tractor for mowing, police car, a police in-car video system, and a Dodge Ram truck for the ocean rescue department. We did a water meter replacement project for $276,405. I wanted to mention, too, it didn't get on the slide, but we also did a water fund generator project, and that was $126,880. We spent $85,975 for a beach nourishment detail study. And this shows our grants that we had during the year. We received $20,000 from the NCDOT bicycling pedestrian grant. This is something that's been on our books several years, and this is the reimbursement. Body armor, the shoreline management, Dare County Shoreline Management, we have been getting that for the last four or five years, about $24,000 a year. The governor highway safety program, we had three police officers. That is in its, and that was an increasing matching contribution. I think we are in the final year for that, as well as the community-oriented police officer, and that is, was a grant, and we picked up 100% of the local match this past fiscal year as well. The government access channel was $13,441, and they continue to provide grants. And we also have an overtime grant, and I'm not quite sure what that acronym, OSADEF, is, but I think it has something to do with drug enforcement, maybe?
It does.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
All right, I'm going to go into our other governmental funds, which we have a public works complex, capital project fund, it's in our budget. We have a fire station capital project fund that's in our budget. And we have several capital reserve funds, which is shoreline accesses, recreational facilities, streets and stormwater management, beach nourishment, a CIP land and buildings, which is no longer in our budget, but it does have a fund balance. And we have a special revenue fund for wireless communications. And I'm going to give you those balances, and hopefully we can flip through them really quickly.
Okay.
Well, unless you have questions, and if anybody has questions, just please stop me and say so. Shoreline accesses $218,125, and these are separate fund balances apart from the undesignated fund balance. Recreational facilities has $85,214. Streets and stormwater management, I'm kind of giving you a little, that had activity in that, in that capital reserve fund, so I'll give you, we, there was a budgeted contribution of $439,561. We authorized, not necessarily spent all that money, but that money's earmarked for projects of 843. And we were able to do that because we had a beginning balance for an available balance at June 30th of 2013, at $21,459. All right, beach nourishment, again, we had some activity in that capital reserve fund. Started the year with $1,036,31. There was some interest that was accrued on the fund. There were authorized expenditures. We didn't spend all the mon, we didn't spend the money, but we have earmarked that money for contracts of $403,913 for an end-of-the-year balance of $646,824 in the beach nourishment fund. All right, and then the CIP for the land and buildings, which is not, we don't have a capital reserve ordinance on our budget for that, but it does have a fund balance of $19,341. The wireless communications special revenue fund, this is for the tower, water tower rental revenue. We started the year with $332,451. The lease revenue for the year was $87,924. Again, we've accrued interest on that fund. There was a, some expenses, I think we do have a commissioned consultant that collects some of those rents and does provide some consulting services, so, and with the ending balance at the, at the end of the year of $416,433. And the Powell bill is a, it's money that is granted from the state. We budget for that every year. We have a, it is a separate designated fund, has a separate fund balance. It's, the balance at the beginning of the year was $105,924. We received $238,372. The interest was accrued on the fund. We have operating cost of $14,000. We did the Southwest area project for a cost of $332,428. We had spent some money on the spring street project. There was a small encumbrance at the end of the year for a ending balance of $10,733. The water fund, and this is in a kind of an accumulation of numbers, just to get back to that net change, change in net position, positive net change in position. We had revenues, again, this is in your CAFR, it is in the back of the book, and it explains how our revenues that are over and under expenditures to get back to the net position, such as principal retirement, capital outlay, depreciation. We do, excuse me, account for the water fund as we would a business and not a government, but it is accounted for as a business here. And the user fees are designed to cover the cost of that operation. The total net position in the water fund is $16,296.24. The amount of that net position that's invested in capital assets is $10,910,842, is actually assets, capital assets. And then the unrestricted portion or fund balance, as you will, is $5,385,182. We did have a 2% increase in the wholesale water rate where we purchased our water from Dare County, and it went from 1.665 to 1.698 per 1,000 gallons. Again, the cost of operation in the wastewater fund are recovered through user charges like a business, and the user fees cover the cost of operation and depreciation. There were revenues over expenditures in the wastewater fund. There was a small amount of capital outlay, and there was $125,000 in depreciation. Again, that is, that is obviously a non-cash expense, and a capital contribution of $21,000 for a negative change in net position of $79,214. I can't help but to think that depreciation had something to do with that. The wastewater fund total net position at June 30th was $279.3. The amount of capital assets in the wastewater fund is $1,024,184 for a negative unrestricted fund balance of $745,181. In the next slide, I think you'll see where that negative 45, $745 is. That's a lot, that's amount owed to the water fund at June 30th. There is a debt from the wastewater fund to the water fund. There was actually a decrease in that debt during the year of $20,145, and we're currently budgeting each year to decrease that debt a little as we go along. These are some of the enterprise fund key ratios. I report these every year, so I'm going to be consistent this year. The operate, this is enterprise fund, so this is a combination of the water and wastewater fund. The median numbers that you see are based on statewide. It's based on a government our size or enterprise fund our size without an electric, electric gum fund or service. This is just water and wastewater. Our operating margin for the year was a minus .03. The median across the state is 6.2. Our quick ratio is 7.5, where our median, where the statewide median is 4.8, so that's good for us. The days, sales, and receivables, ours was 42, the median is 50. The number of days we have cash on hand is 677 days, where the median is 368. So we definitely generate some cash in that, in that fund, and we definitely have it on hand, so. Our cash flow from operations is $837,100, and the median is $507,781. We have a pension trust fund for our law enforcement officers. This is a mandated special fund. We currently have five eligible retirees drawing a retirement benefit from this fund. At June 30th, we had $9,472 in the fund, but it, at this time, it requires $95,302 to fund the current retirees, so we have budgeted for that, and we do budget for that every year. And I do think that this concludes the presentation.
Beverly and staff, thank you so much for the work you put into this and the work you do every day to keep our town in the best fiscal shape that you can keep it. You guys do a great job, so.
Thank you. Well, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Great. Does anyone have any questions for Beverly or her team?
Or once you've read this through cover to cover, and you feel like you want to call and ask any questions, feel free to do so.
Thanks, Beverly.
Or come by.
Thanks a lot.
And Amy and Sharon and Sherry, thank you all as well very much. Okay, I would imagine you may be receiving questions afterwards because it is a lot to digest, but the information is here, and if it's not here, it's there with them.
And each year, we get a new test, the rule to follow, so we try to keep up with it. So even if we don't know, we'll be able to research it and decide why we do.
They'll find out. Thank you all very much. Thank you for being here, Teresa, as well. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on then. Without any questions, we'll move on to new business. We have two items under new business this evening. The first item is appointments and nominations for appointment. We have three, well, two appointments, one to the planning board and one to the personnel board, so in your packet. We're fortunate that the two members, the one from the planning board, Beverly Boswell, and the one from the personnel board, Sue Kelly, who's actually with us this evening, both have expressed their desire to be reappointed to the board. So we do need a motion to reappoint these two members to the two boards.
Do you need separate motions, Debbie, or can do one?
No, sir, one spot.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we appoint Beverly Boswell, reappoint Beverly Boswell to the planning board, and also reappoint Sue Kelly to the personnel board.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Sue, since you're here, we can thank you for serving.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
You're doing a great job on the other committee, too. Thank you.
The next item under number one is Item C, and this is nominations for the North Carolina Coastal Resources Advisory Council. You can see attached with this in our packet was a letter from Frank Gorman III. He's the chair of the Coastal Resources Commission, the CRC, and they've invited Kittle Hills to submit nominations to the Coastal Resources Advisory Council. Dare County Board of Commissioners has already made their nomination, and they nominated Dare County manager Bobby Outen to serve as this member on the council. So with that, we can, if anyone has a nominee in place, or Debbie, for clarification, are they looking at one from the area, or are they looking for multiple nominees? Do you know?
I think that would be the board's preference. If you concur with the county, then you could certainly nominate Bobby if there's someone else that you would like to nominate, but they would then make the selection.
Great. As one representative from the area.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I will say, just speaking on behalf of, I support Dare County Board of Commissioners' recommendation, and I'm really appreciative to the work that Bobby Outen has done over the past number of months. You may recall, he came before us and did a presentation when we were trying to get all three towns involved in the beach nourishment projects and trying to maximize the potential savings by having all three towns, Kitty Hawk and Kittle Hills participating at the same time. It took a lot of work with numbers and a lot of diligence, and Bobby Outen, along with others, but he was really instrumental in doing that, and certainly he's very invested in this and in our area, so I certainly would support that nomination. If you all feel the same, you can, a motion would be in order to nominate Bobby, or if you have someone else you would like to suggest.
I'll make a motion, we nominate Bobby Outen for the position on the CRC.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next item under new business. Next item under new business is item number two. And this is a recommended amendment to chapter fifty-one, Water Service. And this is to extend the payment schedule for water bills more than twice the same quarter average. And Steve, you're already approaching, thank you. Do you mind giving us a brief introduction on this?
Yeah, good evening again. And thank you for considering this. Back in two thousand twelve with the Water System Master Plan update, the formula for calculating the leak adjustments was adjusted and to better recoup our costs. This passed on more of those costs to the customer. And so we, we got some feedback about those bills. And so we looked at if we, if we increased their cost, it would only be fair to increase the amount of time that we give them to pay because really a leak is an unforeseen situation. So.
Okay, thank you. And as you all can see in the last page of the packet on this agenda item, basically the recommendation or the, the new language would talk about that this is section E. The customer may schedule payments over a two-quarter period or a time period not to exceed four quarters for bills that exceed the averaged bill by one hundred percent. And, and so just a little bit of, of history, when the change was made that Steve mentioned back in two thousand and twelve, which increased the, the payback rate, I guess, that our citizens were paying, it was increased because we still owe the county for the money when, when there's a leak. And certainly, it's unfortunate for people if they have a leak and it's an added cost, unforeseen cost. But we still have to pay for the water, the actual water that came from the county. And so this was adjusted back in two thousand and twelve, so we weren't losing money. So we're at least able to cover our expense back to the county that we needed to pay for that water. But in looking at that, I know there was a case right before the end of the year where some, one of our citizens did have a significant leak, bless you. And the, they really needed some additional payback time just because of how much that ended up being. So I think after looking at that and trying to work with, with this particular citizen, it made sense to look at revising this language so then it's on record and on the books so we can work within this, these parameters if we have another citizen that faces this issue.
Very well said.
Any questions or comments for Steve or?
I know in the past, we've had some, unfortunately, some citizens that experienced leaks that were really serious and there was a large amount of water. It was unfortunate, we had to increase the amount that they're charged, but we had to recoup our costs. And I think this is a great idea, you know, to give them more time to pay the bill. Because like you said, it's unforeseen, they're not planning for it, so.
Is the leak covered under a separate bill or is this going to be prorated and added to an existing water bill?
Well, they, they would still need to pay their ongoing water bills. And what Kathy and her staff do is they do set up the payment for them with the leaks, but they would have to. And that, that was one of the reasons that we looked at this was because, you know, they still have the quarterly ongoing water bill. So in some situations, it became quite substantial and a real hardship, but giving them that extra time, they have to stay current with their, with their water bills and with their payment schedule.
Okay.
Well, if the board agrees to this new language, a motion would be in order to adopt this amendment to chapter fifty-one.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the amendment to chapter fifty-one for water services to extend the payment schedule for water bills more than twice the same quarter average.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, next, we'll move on to Commissioner's Agenda. Commissioner Midget?
During the election, Perry White was out here, and he was talking about a non-emergency number, like three-one-one. So if you have something you're not really sure about, you could call three-one-one instead of calling nine-one-one and potentially tying up the nine-one-one dispatch with something that's not such, so important, like a rabid raccoon or something. And he said that there is money in the nine-one-one fund for this. So I was wondering if you guys would be interested in checking this out and seeing if we could do something with that.
Yeah, I'm not.
Is that, is that something that's administered by the county? Would be the county dispatch?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know. We haven't anything to do with that, do we? We can, we can recommend, obviously. As a board, we can recommend, I think. If I'm correct, we can recommend that the county initiate that along with their nine, nine-one-one.
Because there's currently a non-emergency number now. It's not, it's not a three-digit number, but it's a...
Yeah, there is.
What was the gentleman's name?
Perry White.
Barry White?
No, Perry.
Perry.
The number's four-seven-three-three-four-four-four.
Okay. All right. Well... We'll certainly look into that. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
No, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Appleman?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Reba?
Not tonight.
May I approach and Hogan?
I just wanted to remind everybody that I was mentioned at our last meeting, but we have signed a contract to have our fireworks this year. That was something everybody kind of wanted, so we're, we're planning to do it at the opening here.
So plan your holiday accordingly, right?
Yes.
You can stay in Kittle Hills.
We, we're going to be asking for a grant to pay for it, so hopefully that'll come through.
That's great. Anything else this evening?
Oh, no, I'm good.
Okay. Move on to the mayor's agenda. You'll find a memo in your, you've probably already found a memo in your packet from me on the subject, the Community Appearance Commission requests to revise the flag ordinance. And we do have with us the chairwoman of the Community Appearance Commission, Ms. Sue Kelly is here this evening, if you do have any questions on this item. But the Community Appearance Commission has really, they've been looking at a number of issues over two thousand and thirteen. And when they started delving into, you know, what are some of the things that, that really stand out as affecting the, or influence, influencing the overall appearance of our town, flags kept coming up through the discussions and, and meeting or having presentations with some of our staff team, whereas we really don't have an enforceable ordinance of any sort. There's really not much detail related to flags. So basically, the commission is asking the Board of Commissioners tonight to start the process to relook at this ordinance and specifically forward this onto the planning board to start the process, where they could look at that. Their, the town staff have given some thoughts on things that we can look at as far as trying to make the language a little bit more, make it enforceable, make it concrete. So we feel the Community Appearance Commission and I also feel that this would, overall, by, by trying to put together a tight and structured flag ordinance would really enhance the overall appearance of our town. So with that, if you have any questions, feel free to ask Sue. Otherwise, we are looking just for consensus tonight to place this on a future planning board agenda, if the board so desires.
Question, is it for advertising type of flags or is it for national state flags as well?
It's not governmental flags. It would be the things that we're seeing proliferate all over the place now, advertising, trying to attract attention, those kinds of things. There's very little reference in the sign ordinance about flags, but one of the things it does do is exempt the governmental flags from any regulation. So we're really talking about the others.
Like the sale flags.
Yeah, those tall, skinny banners that seem to be everywhere now, and there's no restrictions on, on numbers and condition.
Yeah, I remember one of the meetings when, when I attended on your committee, that the, the idea of the flags, some kind of regulation on them, obviously, but then secondly is the condition. Some of them just look awful even way before the end of the season. They're just tattered and faded and when you come into stuff like that, it's always, what's it, objective or subdued? Object, you know, it's whatever, whatever you, you could say you think is tattered and the guy that owns it says it's not. So that could be a problem, but I'm definitely in favor of trying to do anything we can to improve the appearance of the town, and this is, I'm definitely in favor of this.
Is there consensus to send this to the planning board?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
And that is all I have this evening. So we'll move on to the town manager's agenda.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We have one item this evening, an organizational change in the Ocean Rescue Division. And I'll ask Chief Tilly if he'll come up to the podium and present this to the board. In the meantime, I'd like to mention to the board, I know you all know our Ocean Rescue Supervisor, Dave Elders, but would like to congratulate him on his promotion. He has been in that position as acting since, I guess, August of this past year, and it's now official, so we're very pleased to have him in that position. And the chief would like to speak to what we would like to recommend to you to do, we'd like to do to the assistant position that Dave was in. Chief?
Thank you. Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. Currently, we have two full-time lifeguards assigned to the Ocean Rescue Division. With the current vacancy in one of that, we thought it would be a perfect time to evaluate the need and work to delegate responsibilities efficiently so that we're more effective. During the beach season, you know, it's seven days a week, it's very busy, ten-plus hours a day. We definitely need two supervisors during that timeframe because, you know, one person is only scheduled to work forty hours. So with seven days a week, it turns out to be a large amount of time. So we thought this would be a great opportunity to have two supervisors during the summer season. And then once the beach season slows down, keep one over there overseeing to make sure we have a constant state of readiness in case for emergencies in the sound and also during the ocean. But then take advantage of that slow time and move that person over into the fireside where they can positively impact the fire department during the slower months. So that's what we're requesting right now. We're requesting to set up a Fire Ocean Rescue Sergeant.
Does anyone have any questions for Chief Tilly about this proposal for an organizational change for this position?
I had some concerns and I, I talked to, had a meeting with Debbie and Sean, and I did speak to the chief. And I think most of those concerns of mine have been taken care of. I, I, I just have some reservations about having somebody that's trying to work in two different, wear two hats, so to speak. I think there's, there is potential that for some kind of problems maybe, especially in the transition period in the spring and fall. I have confidence that that'll be handled just, just fine. But I did want to express that when I first read it, I had some concerns, and now I don't have very many, but I have a little bit, so.
Yes, sir. Of course, you know, we have a small organization. We're working within one building, within the fire department and one Ocean Rescue staff. We have the ability to meet face to face and make clear lines of communication so everybody knows exactly what's expected out of each person. Of course, there will be bumps in the road, but, you know, I'm confident with the staff that we have in place that we'll get past anything.
Great, well, thank you. I'm not, I'm not against it at all. I just wanted to express some concerns.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate the work you did in looking at, you know, how to best utilize our resources and to make things as efficient as possible. So I think this gets to that, to most appropriately and efficiently utilize our staff. So I think it's good.
When we spoke the other day, I was, I'm in favor of, of this as well. I think it's a good idea to have it where you get that extra resource in the wintertime and then Dave is allowed to have that during his peak times as well.
Yes, sir.
I think it's going to be good.
I, I completely agree. And Mike and I talked a little bit, and I think, you know, some of the concern is the fact that, you know, when, when you have two people and, well, not, not necessarily two people, what, what we had talked about in, in addressing Mike's concern was that if, if there were to be a fire in the summertime, and I said, well, I, I don't think that will be a problem. I think, I think there, there will be a definite succinct timeframe where the person would be Ocean Rescue and then at the rest of the time, they would be over there. I don't, I, I think you addressed that when you said, you know, you're a small organization and I, I think you'll, you'll definitely have control over when they'll be working and when they won't. And Dave's been there long enough to know. I think, I think he knows what's going on. You, you've got your finger on the pulse of what's going on there, so I don't, I don't have any concerns about this. I appreciate the fact that you're managing this resource very well, so thank you.
We do need a motion, and we need to vote on this since it is a new job description and position. Anyone like to make the motion?
I will make a motion that we change, I guess we need to make a motion that we change the existing position.
You can just make a motion to approve it as presented.
I'll make a motion that we approve this as presented. Thank you.
Good idea. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, chief.
Congratulations, Dave.
Yeah. Congratulations, Dave. Congratulations.
That's all this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Town attorneys?
I was not given anything today. I'm glad to be with you tonight.
Thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
I guess everyone noticed we had a fill-in tonight for our attorney, so thank you so much for being here. Glad we didn't put you to work too much.
Thank you so much, too.
Okay. And the next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Four items on the consent agenda. The first is minutes from the December the fourth, two thousand and thirteen meeting. Second is the annual certification of firefighters. Next is a resolution authorizing disposition of unfound, excuse me, unclaimed found bicycles. And lastly is two budget amendments. One is to appropriate funds to co-sponsor the North Carolina Coastal Local Government Meeting. And second, to record additional contributions that the town has received for purchases of the AEDs. And staff would recommend approval of consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Debbie. Okay. At this time, we move into the second time set aside this evening for public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Yes, Howard.
Howard Kimball, eight oh three West Sportsman Drive. Have just a couple of comments. One of them, Commissioner Hogan asked to, for an explanation of what CRS was. Well, us older folks, we have an explanation of that, but it's age-related, so I won't go into that, okay? But on a more serious note, getting back to what Jack was talking about, about the insurance. And those of you like myself that doesn't have cable, I've got DirecTV, so I don't get channel twenty. But Outer Banks Voice also had some coverage in there. But if you, if, if any of you were here and saw the crowd that we had, because people were, were filling the little vestibule out here, there were, it was just wall-to-wall folks. And if you looked at the, at the age of those people, they were like my age. They weren't really a lot of youngsters in here. So the, our older folks really have a great concern about this, about this insurance. And you have until January the thirty-first to respond to the North Carolina Commissioner of Revenue. That's when he's going to set the hearings for this. That's when he's going to set the hearings for this. But according to Willow, we can attend the hearings, but we can't talk. So it's one of those things. So you need to either do the email to him or write it out and do snail mail. So, but it's something that's of great concern to us, especially the retirees that's on fixed income. And I don't want you to see me out here at pushing carts at Food Lion, although there's nothing wrong with that, but I'd prefer not to do it at my age. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Howard.
So we have meetings where nobody can speak?
That would be against everything we ran on. Okay, anyone else this evening that wishes to speak? Oh, Ms. Mary.
I just confirmed with John that he can burn a disc at that meeting and give it to Commissioner Reubach to show over at the bomb center if that would be of any help.
We would be glad to do that.
Great, thank you. It's a great idea. And I wonder if we can, in light of Howard's Kimball about the January 31st, because obviously the more people that respond and send in their comments, the better. We can get that information posted out. Meredith, did you have something you wanted to add?
You're on two different insurances and I just wanted the board to be clear.
Yeah, there's two separate things going on.
There's two different insurance issues that were discussed that I understand. And the one that Howard's speaking to is the beach plan.
The homeowner's.
The homeowner's insurance, not flood, which is the...
The flood is what is a different...
Bigger Waters.
Federal. Is the Bigger Water Act of 2013 and that's a federal law or federal law that was passed. The beach plan, the one that NC20's been involved with, that all the towns and counties have been involved with for a while, is the January 31st deadline that Howard mentioned. And I just, I just wanted to, you'd have to go up a little bit if you want to support the bill to delay the implementation of the Bigger Water Act because you'll have to go to the US Senate.
There is a proposed bill to delay full implementation of the Bigger Water Act for four years. That bill is only delaying it. We're going to get the full effect on it even if it passes. And I read an analysis today online that it was not expected to pass.
Let's feel a lot more advocacy.
Yeah, if it does pass, at least we'd have four years to maybe try to put it off and maybe administrations will change by then, there'd be a different view.
Well, as Howard said, for people in our age group, we have four years to sell our properties.
Don't leave.
They're going to have to, can't afford to live here.
The four years was, the crux of it was so that FEMA could do the financial analysis of the impacts of the Bigger Water Act so that there was something that you could look at and make educated arguments.
And to tangibly...
Instead of hypothetical arguments.
Right.
So we would respond to our senators, right?
Your United States senators.
Yes, right.
And your House and state representatives for the homeowner's insurance with the state commissioner. I just wanted to be sure that the board understood you're talking about two different insurance. Both are going up according to the forum, but I just wanted you to know that there's two different issues and not to talk to the right people.
Right, no, great point. And I'm trying, I was not here Thursday night. So John, from your position, did Willow go into explaining both of those? So it's very clear for people watching, because you're not going to get all the background in this little, in this meeting, but, okay, I'm hearing nods. So if you watch that segment or if you do need another copy, so we'll send it to the bomb center.
The full one hour is on the first page of the town of Kittle Hills website. I'm sure Ms. Mary put it there. But the full one hour of Willow is on the KDH NC website.
Great, and that will go into detail about explaining the differences and, right, okay, super. So please check that out.
Yeah, she actually, I was there on Thursday. She actually had two handouts. I'm wondering if there's a way that we can distribute those.
Could get them on the webs, our website, I'm sure.
Right, one is specific to the Bigger Water and then the other is the insurance rate filing increase. I mean, if we could get that even out to our electronic list.
We will. That's exactly what we'll do.
Okay.
And we'll put together, in fact, I emailed Meredith after her initial comments this evening. We'll put together a packet of information that we can send out electronically, place on our website, link off your Facebook too, and just generally try to get it spread around.
Great.
And we can also make that available at the bomb center. And what we'll do is we'll make a, we'll do two things. We'll make it available to anybody who wants to come in and watch it because we have a TV that's available for viewing there. But we'll also set up a time where people can come in and sit down and watch it and we'll give out the handouts at that point in time as well.
We'll share those primary materials with you.
That's great.
Great.
So we can do, we can do that both ways.
One thing I wanted to, I'd forgotten to talk about it earlier, but one of the things that she pointed out about the affordability of it, there's two things. One, the bill that is set to potentially delay for four years so that they can do this affordability study, that was delayed because of lack of funding, which I thought was kind of ironic. But the other piece was there was an example of an oceanfront motel and his flood insurance rates under this current proposed was going to go from a little under seven to 55,000 a year. Which means his initial thought was, there's no way I can feasibly make that.
How do you pass that on to your guests? It's scary. Okay, well, we will work together to get the information out as best we can. Does anyone else have anything for the board this evening? If not, a motion would be in order to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you all for being here.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Thank you all.